Good evening, folks. This time we'll call the Tuesday, May 20th, 2014, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. This time we'll have the invocation. Bow with us, please. Heavenly Father, we again come to your throne of grace and we just thank you so much for that opportunity. It's something we confess that we don't avail ourselves of nearly often enough. Tonight, we've got several special occasions. We're gonna remember one of our own who's with you this evening. And we're gonna celebrate the accomplishments by some folks who have taken a personal initiative, and I pray you'll bless them for the personal initiative they've shown, that you'll give them wisdom. I'm gonna pray you give this board wisdom. We have many difficult decisions in the days ahead. We have an appointment to replace David Boone on this board. We have a budget to adopt. And we confess our own shortcomings and our lack of wisdom. And we humbly ask you for that this evening. Lord, it's a pleasure to come to you and pray to you in the presence of these folks and before your throne. And we thank you and praise it for it, in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen. Let's stand and say a pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, any adjustments to this agenda from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a few adjustments. First thing I'd like to do is remove the property acquisition that we have scheduled under closed session. But I would also like to add two items under closed session. One for economic development, which is going to be GS 143-318-11A4, and personnel, 143-318-11A6.
Okay. That all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board this evening? There's no other. I have one I would like to offer is under appointments before the board that we would suspend our rules and make an appointment to the Health Board if we can this evening. So I would offer a motion, we adopt this agenda with those amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we have a special opportunity to recognize some folks. I'm gonna ask Mr. Vester and Claire Maboon if they would come up. We're gonna make a presentation of a plaque in honor of the memory of Mr. David Boone, if you folks would come forward, please. and it is in memory of David A. Boone. Whereas it is with deepest regret that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the death of Commissioner David A. Boone, who departed this life on April 27th, 2014, and whereas David was elected and served on the Iredell County Board of Commissioners from 1992 to 1996, 1996 to 1998, and from 2012 to 2014. And whereas David served as the Vice Chairman of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners from 1992 to 1996, and whereas David exemplified the true meaning of a dedicated public servant, having served on numerous committees and boards such as the Fire Service District Tax Board of Directors, Central Island Council of Governments, Iredell County Board of Health, Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, and Iredell County Board of Social Services. And whereas David was an unpretentious man of high character and who was committed to the welfare of others in Iredell County, and whereas David exhibited a certain conservative insight and intelligence through his knowledge and eagerness to learn... Hold that, I'm gonna turn the page. And whereas most importantly, David was a Christian man who conveyed both a love and strength for his family, friends, and community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby memorializes David A. Boone for his distinguished and impressive career in local government and for his life and memory that will surely be missed but highly cherished and revered. Be it therefore further resolved that this resolution be included in the permanent minutes of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners and that a copy be presented to the family of Commissioner Boone with the deepest respect and utmost appreciation. And I would offer that in the form of a motion at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. It's presented to you folks on May 20th, 2014, and it's my privilege to present you with this resolution. In addition, we have two plaques. One is yours to take home with you. The other will be permanently placed in the hall in the corridor downstairs, and it recognizes David Andrew Boone for dedicated service to the citizens of Iredell County while serving on the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, Vice Chair 92 to 96, and elected 92 to 96, 96 to 98, and 2012 through 2016. Mr. and Mrs. Boone, I hope you'll accept this plaque and this resolution as some token of our appreciation. We realize that it's not much, but it is from the heart, and we want to recognize you folks. I know these things won't do much in this regard, but we hope a public expression of our thanks for David's service and for you folks producing such a fine man to serve as fellow citizens in Iredell County. And our love and admiration for him and our expression of that will assuage your grief and will comfort you in the day to come, and God bless both of you. Thank you very much. I particularly want to thank you, all the members of the board, the county staff, and all of you for the kindnesses and support that we've received in the last seven weeks. It's meant a lot to us and all you people out here. We appreciate your kindnesses to us, your prayers for us, and we just want to say thank you very much. One more thing. Here's David's name plate that was in front of his seat on the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you. of graduates from the Iredell County Citizens Academy. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Ben Stikelether to come forward at this time. And I've asked Mr. Stikelether to present these certificates on behalf of Iredell County. And I believe you have the names of those folks. If he calls your name, if you would come forth and be recognized for your achievement.
I just wanted to take a second and tell everybody what this is about. It's a 13-week class that these folks have signed up for of their own free will to attend and learn a little bit about what the county government does for them. It's something not enough people know about, and hopefully they've learned a lot and been entertained at some of the sessions. I know I've had a lot of fun learning with them and getting to know each and every one of them, and just want to say congratulations to you guys for your dedication and, you know, look forward to seeing you involved in county government in the future. So before we start doing names, Jennifer Christian had something that she wanted to share. So Jennifer, if you want to come on up, I'll give you your certificate, and you can come Jennifer, before you do that, here's your certificate.
Thank you.
And the lovely parting gift.
Fabulous. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and read a few words from a thank you note to Mr. Stikelether, actually. And I'll just go ahead and read directly, if that's all right with everyone. "Ben, thank you for your amazing coordination of the Iredell County Citizens Academy. It was well thought out, informative, and each and every presenter was a positive reflection of their fellow county staff members. You went above and beyond to ensure that each member of the academy was communicated with and engaged. You represented not only your department but all county departments with professionalism, enthusiasm, and dedication, and we citizens are very fortunate to have you working for us. So thank you for all of your hard work. We appreciate it."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Jennifer, if you'll just stay up here, we're gonna take a picture after we get everybody's certificate. Labrika Anderson? There you go. William Blevins, aka Billy Buck. Everybody knows him as William Blevins. Break in the room? I hear ya. I hear ya. Patricia Stevens? Otherwise, I'm gonna get all up in the picture, like, double time. And last but not least, Skip Weber. Guys, congratulations, and if you ever need anything, you've got my phone number or email, so stay in touch.
All right. We typically don't do that in this room.
All right, wait, wait just a minute. Y'all spread just a little bit. Just a little. Now they're good. Go ahead. Don't worry about him. Come on in here. I was just kidding. Y'all tighten up there. Come on over, Barbie. You all right?
He's gonna say good things about you in this. We move now to appointments before the board, and we have a request from Teresa Adams, Managing Director of the Children's Homes of Iredell County, to waive fees at the solid
I'm standing in for Teresa Adams, who is our new Managing Director. I served as Director for 22 years, and at the mention of retirement, my board said, oh my God. So we are in a new business plan, a new plan for our growth, and wanted to say from our agency, thank you for all the consideration that the Board of Commissioners has given us over the years. And this request is for our special treasures thrift store, Workforce Development Store, that will soon celebrate its third anniversary, has been very successful thanks to the community of Iredell County and the people within that community who have taken part in our program, have bought into it, have donated and bought items, and made it a success. So much of it's success, just for example, this past week, we had 16 pickups. A lot of good stuff, but there's also a lot of stuff that we're not gonna have on our floor. But when we're doing 16 pickups a week, we don't really have time to say, well, no, we're not gonna take that, because we accept gifts as gifts come, and then we go from that point. The request from our new manager was to waive this, and she couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to come, because I'm a familiar, an old face, but still speaks for the Children's Homes of Iredell County, in asking for this request. And our previous store manager, Steve Byrd, I'm not sure who he spoke with at the landfill, so I'm just kinda standing here without a lot of information, but I was said, I was told, well, I need for you to go and speak to the Commissioner, so that's why I'm here, and I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability. But we are asking that the fee be waived for our organization, because we are a small nonprofit, and, you know, several years ago, we lost the $253,000, but that didn't stop us in our efforts to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for children in foster care and those who have aged out, to provide those job skills to help them be a more positive community member when they're out of the system. So we feel like we're partners with the county, with the community, because a lot of the stuff that we get, if it didn't go to the right place, it would be out in the field somewhere, and that's not what we want. So that's why we're asking to be, for another partnership with the county to waive that fee for us.
Any questions?
Mr. Smith, what's the best way to do this? Is it to waive the fee or to have them accumulate the fees, and then we just, we take care of that at the end of the year? Which is the best administratively or easiest to do?
I would say waiving the fees of... I've asked David Lambert to come, and he might be able to give us a better answer on that. David, if you don't mind.
Do we also know how much this will be roughly, an estimate of the fees?
I don't. Sorry.
Well, actually, excuse me. Actually, this has been in place since April 18th, 2006. I have a copy of memo from Mr. Mashburn after the meeting on April 18th of that year, that Board of Commissioners voted on April 18th to waive tipping fees on waste brought in by nonprofits if it meets a test of being household waste and was donated to the organization. And he went on to give an example, if it's something that a normal household would have already had, and it got donated to any nonprofit, then we would accept that if they couldn't use it free of charge. So really, I was a little bit surprised that I was here tonight on this, because this policy should have been in place, and I don't know if anybody ever asked ahead of time. The only caution I would have, if you have a manufacturer, a company that wants to give you something, be very cautious, because we don't look at that as household waste. We've had, I think the instance Habitat for Humanity, I think it was, got 100 headboards donated to them. Well, without the footboard and rails, that's not much good, and that's a manufactured product, and even though you have beds in your household, that was a company that was just finding a conduit to get rid of their waste at no fee. So that's the only caution I have, but I'm good with this. We just waive the fee at the scale. We know the folks when they come in, and they tell us who it is, and we waive that fee at the scale.
So no action required.
No action required.
Well, then, I apologize for taking the time, but with the growth of the store and, you know, moving over into the new building, you know, it was the volume of... And so I apologize, but in the mix of moving and changing and growing, that's one of those things that fell by the wayside. So I appreciate your patience and listening to me. And but one other thing that I would ask, that if you have volunteer hours that are needed, we could sure use some volunteers now that we're in the larger building, and we have a lot of kids that are learning in this program, and we want them to learn from the experts. We want them to be seated in seats of power, not in the jail that has to be enlarged. So thank you so much for all the support over the years, and thank you for the certificate. It was a great class. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn the first three items, A, B, and C, over to Susan Robertson. The first two are budget amendments, and the third is a request from the Finance Department for approval of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council certification.
Thank you. Memo three is a request to approve Budget Amendment Number 35 to appropriate from the General Fund $210 to the 911 Fund. Each year in August, we provide to the state 911 Board an annual report of our revenues and spending of that fund. They go through it with a fine tooth comb, and this year, they determined that we needed to reimburse $209.26 for an AT&amp;T bill that they had paid every year, or allowed us to pay every year. So I requested the Board approve this budget amendment so we can be in compliance.
Okay. Are there any questions, Ms. Robertson? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Move to approve Budget Amendment Number 35.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next memo is to request your approval of Budget Amendment Number 36 to increase the revenues in our healthcare benefit fund and increase our expenditures. We have had an extraordinarily bad year with catastrophic claims in our healthcare benefit fund, and Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act requires that I can't spend anything that is not budgeted. So although we have received stop-loss payments to cover these, most of these excess costs, I need the budget amendment so I can be within statute. You can see that I budgeted over $1 million in stop-loss claims, payments for this year, and I believe by the end of June will be almost $2.5 million on those stop-loss claims. So it's no new appropriation from any of our other operating funds, but it's to recognize that stop-loss.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Robertson, in regard to this matter? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 36.
Okay. Motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is for to request your approval of the 2015 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council certification. Iredell County receives $15,500 each year to support the administrative side of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. There are certain standards that the council has to meet, and we have met all of our standards except for we have not been able to get all of our positions filled on the council. So we are out of compliance there, but we are working on it to have that cured before the start of the next funding year. Specifically, we need two people under the age of 18. That age group is very hard to bring out a school and attend council meetings once a month. The principals at Statesville Senior High School over the years have worked well with us to allow a student to leave and come to our meeting at the public library, but this year, we've not been able to get those filled. And several other representatives, I think two will be appointed by this board at the next meeting, and the nominating commission, or nominating committee for JCPC will be meeting in the next couple of weeks to vet a few applications for the appointments that they make.
This is where y'all raise your hands.
Any questions, Ms. Robertson? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item D is a request from the Tax Administration Department for approval of April's refunds and releases, and these are in order.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And E is a request for approval of the May 6th, 2014 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Central Island Workforce Development, we have two announcements. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, we have one announcement, and the Social Services Board, one announcement. That brings us to appointments to boards and com- That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees. The floor is open for nominations.
Is the vacancy there?
Yeah, that was Teddy Mills.
Can we table that?
Yeah.
Till Marvin comes back?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tabled.
That's a motion to table?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a motion to table this nomination from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have two appointments.
I nominate Ruth Waters and James Hatfield.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Ms. Waters and Mr. Hatfield by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Health Board, and we've had difficulty filling a dentist position, so we finally found some willing to serve. That's, uh, that's the origin of my anxiety in moving forward with this thing. So at this point, I would place a nomination, Mr. James E. Hunter. Dr. James E. Hunter, who wishes to be in our dental, dentist appointment to the Health Board. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Dr. Hunter by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, did we skip B, the Connect Consortium?
Oh, you sure did. I apologize.
Yeah, I was.
I apologize. Yeah, I went right by.
It slipped through or something, huh?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, will you nominate Matthew Todd for the Carolina Council of Governments?
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Todd by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I blew right by that one. Any unfinished business to come to our attention? We'll move the public comment period. Mr. Ed McClellan has signed up. Is Mr. McClellan here? Yes, sir. If you would come, Mr. McClellan, if you'd come to the podium, please, sir. We'd be glad to hear what you have to say this evening.
Yes, I'm Ed McClellan. I live in West Stardle. I'm a retired teacher out of Statesville Schools. I had a stroke, which took my ability to read. I read very slowly. So I've asked my friend here, Sam McDowell, if he would come and read some prepared comments that I wanted to address to the board. Thank you.
That'll be fine. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. That's something that has come near to my heart, both literally and figuratively. I'd like to tell you about two of our county departments that I am very proud of knowing, and I believe that very proud of the men and women working for you as part of the government. This past February 23rd, I suffered a mild stroke. My daughter called 911 and activated the Aridale County Emergency Medical System. Firefighters from the West Aridale Fire Department arrived, followed by the ambulance from Aridale EMS. The paramedics assessed the situation quickly and moved me to the ambulance for an emergency ride to Aridale Memorial. After spending several hours at Aridale Memorial, the doctor determined that the cause of my stroke was because of cardiac arrhythmia, and I needed to be transferred to Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center in Winston. The Aridale EMS was called, and the paramedics came and moved me to the ambulance for another emergency ride to Baptist. During the trip, the young lady that was in the back with me, a paramedic named Amanda, was constantly monitoring me with their EKG machine, and also having to monitor and adjust multiple IV medication drips and pumps that Aridale Memorial had sent with me. So I'm aware during the ride, my heart became, began acting normally and started beating irregularly again. Amanda recognized the problem and knew the implications. She called ahead to Baptist, spoke with a doctor, and recommended to administer a specific medication that they carry on the ambulance. He gave her permission and gave the medication, and the heart arrhythmia cleared up almost immediately. The thing that struck me during the episode with this young lady, recognized the problem, and when she called the doctor, she asked for a certain medication. She did not wait for him to decide what I needed. She knew what I needed and only needed his permission to give the medicine. All this at 80 miles an hour on I-40. We never had to stop or, and wait for help from anyone else. All of our actions were calm, cool, and professional. I did not know until later that heart arrhythmia was so deadly to so many people. On April 14th of this year, I was outside cutting grass when my internal defibrillator fired in my chest. I made it inside at the house and called 911. Again, West Aridale Fire Department arrived quickly, and then the paramedics from Aridale EMS. I do not remember a lot that transpired, but by my internal defibrillator fired several times, when the paramedics got to me, I was clinically dead. I had no heartbeat and was, I was not breathing. The paramedics had me documented on EKG tape as being without heartbeat for over nine minutes, which saved my life. Was effective CPR from the West Aridale Fire Department for responders, and aggressive drug and electrocardiac therapy from the paramedics. I was shocked a total of three times by EMS, and after starting an IV and several doses of medication that reacted directly with cardiac muscle, my heart began beating again. My neighbor was at the house during the entire incident and told me about the work those wonderful people do. He said, "Nobody got excited. Everyone knew their job and the role they had to play." After they got me going, I was moved by ambulance for another emergency ride to Aridale Memorial. I was in the emergency room for about two hours when they just gave me more medication to stabilize me and decided to transport me to Baptist in Winston again. Thankfully, this ride was without event. The, the young man in the back kept constant eye on, on all the monitors and pumps at 42 miles on rough interstate, set off numerous alarms. I want to come to speak tonight to tell you the story for a couple of reasons. Number one, I want you, the elected leaders of our county, to know what these trained individuals do. They encounter some incredibly difficult circumstances and react compassionately and professionally. I took it for granted when I called for help, someone would show up. They literally bring the hospital to your doorstep. Secondly, I want the West Aridale Fire Department and EMS to know that appreciate them and what they do for our community. I want to thank them for giving me another chance of life. But as I've spent some time with them, I have learned there are a few things I want you to know, the county leaders. In the past 10 months, Aridale EMS has increased its cardiac arrest survival rate from 14% to 36%. They base these statistics, statistics on data recorded by the State Office of EMS. What they count as a save is they encounter someone in cardiac arrest, no pulse, no respiration, nothing on the EKG, to show the heart is beating. EMS paramedics work on the patient using their skills and technology. Then the patient has to have a pulse and organized heart rhythm prior to going through the doors of the emergency room. I learned that these ambulances are, that will roll out of the station door somewhere between 24,000 and 25,000 times in Aridale County each year. They will respond somewhere to 14,000 people. They cross every demographic line. They go anywhere at any time inside the county. People call every day with any number of emergencies. Responders respond to everything from just not feeling well, heart attacks, to multiple car accidents. Thankfully, most of the time, their calls are not emergency, but the thing to remember is, it is an emergency to the caller. I want to encourage you and my fellow community members to meet with, with these folks and learn what they are doing. I found it encouraging that even though they have shown remarkable, measurable improvements in their important category, you know that they can do better and will help from us, the community. I ask specifically that you, you could, what you could do to help them in their mission. I was told going to, go out and learn CPR. Talk to your friends into learning CPR. Get your church and civic groups to invest in automatic defibrillators to have in the building. I learned that effective CPR is a key to successful outcome to cardiac arrest recitation. CPR literally brings time, buys time to get the professionals at your side. I would like to suggest that you, elected leaders of our county, and to insist that all Aridale County employees learn CPR. I would like to suggest that all public-funded buildings have an automatic, external defibrillator on the site and available for immediate use. And I personally, as a retired pilot from U.S. Airways, all of our, every airplane we flew had an automatic external defibrillator, and all the crew members were trained on them. I certainly hope you will, will meet with our emergency services people. They're doing fantastic work in our community, and I hope you'll ask the same question I ask. What can I do to help? You're in a position to make the necessary moves to help these services do their jobs easier. Speaking as a taxpayer, I'd rather see our, our taxpayers doing something for the benefit of the entire community than making a direct impact on people's lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate your comments. Any new business to come to our attention this evening? County managers' report?
I really don't have a report, other than to say, it's ironic about this gentleman's comments, because we, we are in the process of providing AEDs for all of our buildings. They're totally unrelated, but it's just something that we've done in the last week or so.
Okay. All right. I would move we go into closed session for Economic Development, General Statute 143 318 11A4, and Personnel, General Statute 143 318 11A6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Motion carries. You know.[118.61]
There'll be no action as a result of our closed session. This time I make a motion we continue this meeting till Thursday at 5:30. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries and adjournments.